Good evening and welcome to tonight's special Board of Education meeting on February 23. I would like to call this meeting to order. And first of all, as a housekeeping note, we do have public comment today, but given the nature of the agenda, we split it up a little bit. Instead of having public comment prior to Mrs. Belizzi and Superintendent Belizzi talking about the changes in the plan, we are going to have her present. The board will have their discussion time and then we'll give public comment. So if there's anything that isn't answered, you'll have the opportunity to do that. The same thing when we talk about our policy and regulation for face masks. The board will have discussion and then we'll have public comment and then bring it back for a vote. We thought that was a little bit more appropriate so that you can speak on either topic or both, but have all the information instead of having public comment at the beginning of the meeting. So with that, Mrs. Belizzi, I will turn it over to you and you can walk us through the revisions of the reopening plan, the re- reopening plan.
Right. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So tonight, I'm going to take you through this plan. We did make some revisions to the plan based on the changes that will be happening. These revisions will take place and start if approved tonight on Monday, February 28. So as you're all aware, the executive order that covers masks to start is expiring on Monday, February 28. And so the decision to move forward with whether we are mandating and requiring masks or making them optional has become something that is now a local decision, meaning superintendents, Board of Educations, local health departments, medical advisors for the district, all kind of come together, collaborate, and make a decision moving forward. For us, we also got guidance on February 18 from the Connecticut Department of Public Health, which issued for superintendents and boards of education some guidance as to things they can look at to help them make those decisions. Such things as, and I'm just sharing these because it may come up as we go through, possible factors such as the community and district transmission of COVID-19, the current vaccination status of our students and staff in the district and the community. Other factors for us to look at are the mitigation strategies that we've used, such as recommending vaccinations for eligible staff and students, supporting staff and students who choose to wear a mask if it becomes optional, the follow, continue to follow the isolation guidelines, and continue to notify families and staff and students of cases as they come up on a daily basis. So those are some of the things that we've looked at as we've moved through to make the decisions. So if we take a look at the plan, on page two, underneath the safety, for students and staff safety, you'll notice that under the adults and student mask section, we did state here that beginning on Monday, February 28, the masks will be optional for students and staff. We do want to note and highlight that we want to continue to support both the students and the staff of the district who choose to wear a mask. Some may choose to wear it, so we do want to make sure that those staff members feel supported as well as the staff and students who choose not to wear a mask. One thing I do want to mention is, in all of the guidance we've been given, that if there is a local outbreak or if a new variant comes through or if our cases tend to surge, we are going to then revisit the optional mask piece in collaboration with the local health department or nursing coordinator and the Department of Public Health to then review the strategies we have and make determinations going from there. As you're aware, the House Bill of 5047 does authorize the Commissioners of Education and of the Office of Early Childhood to make that decision if need be, and that is in effect until the end of June 2022. Another thing moving through of important note is right now, if we go optional and when we go optional on Monday, it is optional mask wearing for in-school and on school grounds, but it is still required on the bus. On public transportation to and from school, masks are required, and they are also required if a student is participating in an athletic competition or taking the bus, they still are using transportation, the mask is required. And that is required right now through March 18 of 2022. That is a federal mandate. That is not something that is state mandated, so as of right now, that is in effect until then. So I do want to point that out. We did have a great discussion today with our administrators, and we are looking to provide boxes of masks, the cloth masks, on the buses, just in case a student forgets it, either getting on the bus, getting off the bus, leaving school, so that there are masks available so they can take one and ride the bus home or to school. Some of the things throughout here, we did keep the same. For example, the protective equipment, there will still be face shields and masks available for any staff or student who needs one or requests one. Social distancing will still remain when feasible, as we've done in the past. We will still provide hand sanitizer and promote the hand washing, and we will still make it public to all staff and families, any vaccination clinics that we are aware of, if people choose to take advantage of that. Of note on page four is the illness section. So again, just a reminder, and you know, we've said this in the past as well, but a reminder for all staff and students that if they are not feeling well, to really make sure they stay home if they have any COVID-like symptoms or are feeling sick. We will continue with the sick isolation rooms. So right now, every one of our schools has a sick room, and it is staffed, and it will remain intact through the end of the school year. We will continue to follow those processes and procedures that we have right now. The one thing we did discuss is that if a student comes down to the sick health room and has symptoms or fever, we will ask them to put on a mask until mom or dad or grandma or someone can come to pick them up in that short period of time. We will continue to maintain the same isolation protocols that we have in place currently, meaning if someone tests positive, they're out of school for the five days. If they're symptom-free, they may return on day six after they are feeling better and have no symptoms. All of our cleaning and disinfecting protocols will remain the same. And we will continue with posting our signs as we have in the past. All of those pieces are the same. In terms of our learning model as we move forward, all students will continue with in-person learning instruction. Voluntary distance learning is still not an option. The state did not make any changes to that. If there are parents who, due to this change, feel that they do not want to send their child to school, they still have that homeschool option where they can fill out the forms and have their child homeschooled. We will continue with reviewing all of our protocols for visitors to the schools. I think as we spoke today with our administrators and we reviewed this plan and talked, you know, as a central office team, moving forward, starting on Monday, we would like, you know, to review those practices and make sure that if families or parents are coming in, you know, that we are making them aware of what our practices are, our protocols for being in the school, and welcoming them as we always have before, but just being cautious. This will be the first time without the mask. We just want to make sure as we move through to this transition, we kind of want to ease into it and just make sure we have things in place, because we don't want to have that spike. I don't know if it will occur or not, but we just want to, you know, evaluate things as we go through. Athletics. So the C I A C has released their guidance as to what they will be requiring moving forward beginning on February 28. Their guidance states that all the winter and spring sports programming will follow, you know, everything that they've done thus far, but they will not be requiring the masks for the students that are participating in sports. The masks that are required or could potentially be required as spectators, it depends on the place that is facilitating and holding the event. So wherever the event is means that they have to follow those protocols as a spectator. But let me just get to the part where they are specifically, masks are not required for student athletes and officials while participating in indoor competitions and practices. Students, athletes, coaches, officials, game workers, and spectators will follow mask permissions, as I said earlier, and restrictions issued by the facilities, and masks are required on the bus. So we'll continue to reinforce those requirements that the C I A C has as well. Our after-school programming will remain the same, and our field trips, we will continue with the same process we have now, where the forms are reviewed and submitted based on the, where the field trip is going, the relationship to our curriculum will be reviewed and handled on a case-by-case basis, and we will ask all of our administrators and staff just to review the mitigation strategies that they will be using when they go on the field trip, just so we have things in place and everyone's clear as to what to expect. In terms of instruction for our isolated students or quarantined students, students in the K-2 buildings will have access through Seesaw to receive assignments, and in our 3-12, students will have access to Google Classroom to receive the assignments and instruction that they need. We do have our remote teachers at the elementary buildings. We have one in each elementary building, and we have our recovery teachers in grades 6 through 12 that are there to support the students when they come back, if there is any instruction that they feel they may have missed or they need additional support in, in addition to contacting their classroom teachers or their teachers for that subject area for some questions that they may have regarding the assignments. That is our revision to the plan. I do want to share some of the data that we had looked at as a district, because I do think it's important for everyone to understand where we're coming from and the things that we reviewed. We do currently send out, and this will continue, building administrators will continue to send out the notifications daily to the families and to the staff when someone is positive within their school. We will continue to send out the Friday letter that does it for the whole district and continue to daily update the COVID dashboard. So those things will still be available on a daily basis, but just to give some examples to show where we are, because our numbers are decreasing, you know, when we started back in September for this school year, we had, on average, about 10 to 11 cases a week. October, we were at about seven to eight. November, about 21. December, approximately 51 cases a week. And then in January, you can definitely see where we kind of increased where the variants had come through, where we were, on average, about 191 cases a week as a district. In February, we are looking much better. It definitely started to come down in February. If I break it down, the average is approximately, as of Friday, approximately 28 a week. So when I talked to Kathy Nealon today, our nursing coordinator who gives us every day the daily count, we did not have any cases reported to us today, and we report cases from Saturday to the following Friday, and so so far, we're at about 10. So we definitely are seeing that we are decreasing every week the number of cases, and I do think that has a lot to do with a lot of the strategies, mitigation strategies that we have in place, which will continue as we move through this process.
Thank you, Superintendent Belizzi. At this point, I will entertain if there's any questions from the board. Mr. Doring, followed by Mrs. Castelli. Turn your mic on.
Superintendent Belizzi, do you have any information as to the current vaccination rates within the school district?
Yes, I do. Hold on one second here. So we do have some numbers, and they are all posted on the website, so you can access them. I can give you the community ones, and then I can give you pretty much an overall. So right now, we know as a Wallingford community, we have 77.4% of the Wallingford residents fully vaccinated. Our 12- to 17-year-olds, right now, we have 81% that are fully vaccinated, and our 5- to 11-year-olds, we have approximately 34%.
Okay, and just one other question. So if we were to be removing the masks, if we were to see cases go up, do you have a certain number in mind at which point you would be recommending that the masks come back?
So I don't have a certain number. We did talk about that on our, on our calls that we have every Tuesday with the Department of Public Health, you know, the State Department of Public Health, and the Commissioner of Education. And right now, we do not have an exact number. It's something that I think for us, as we watch it every day, we'll be able to see that if potentially there is a spike or a surge, we'll be able to notice it fairly quickly. Because when we think about our 12 schools and adult ed and even central office, you know, we have a large number of students, what, 5,300, approximately 5,300 students and 1,200 staff members. So when we watch that every day, we'll be able to see those cases rise, because we do pay every day we watch it. And so I think we'll be able to see if it's all coming from one school, both at the high schools, depending on where it is, and I think that's when we will continue to talk with Kathy Nealon, our nursing coordinator. Steve Savitelli has been a fabulous resource for us here at the Wallingford, you know, Department of Public Health, and we're always collaborating and reviewing, in addition to, you know, speaking with the State Department, who has offered to collaborate with all of us, the superintendents, to make those kind of determinations as we go.
Okay, and if the cases were to go back up and you were to go this direction, would this just be a decision that you can make as superintendent, or do you need to come back before the Board of Education on this?
I think it would be something that we'd have to kind of review and talk about, but I do think it would be something that we just have to make based on the evidence that we have in front of us and in the surge.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Mrs. Castelli?
Thank you. Ms. Belizzi, actually, that was one of the questions I was going to have when you talked about the, you know, the localized outbreak, if it should occur. I wanted to know what the role of the board would be in that scenario, similar to, I'm assuming it would be similar to what we're doing here this evening. You made the, you made the decision, basically, and we're now going to approve that decision. So I guess that's been answered. Regarding absenteeism, the illness, I'm concerned especially for seniors. I think the state has relaxed the requirements for absenteeism. In other words, we have a policy for absent, kids can't be absent more than X number of days. Has that been relaxed, especially for our seniors this year, because we're saying to them, you've got to sniffle, you have to stay home? Or are they still bound by the, by the policy for absenteeism?
So they're bound by the policy, but it does, so we have a code that says they are absent but remote. So if they do, I believe it's a half a day worth of, am I correct on Mrs. Latour, a half day of work, then that would count as being present. So even though they're, they're ill, they're not feeling well, they have COVID-like symptoms, if they are continuing to log into Google Classroom, complete the assignments, complete what we would call a half-day's worth of work, they are marked, like quarantined present.
Okay, very good, very good. Thank you. That alleviates that concern of mine. I think I had one more. Let me see. Oh, yes, the school cafeteria, now the kids are going to be maskless during cafeteria. Are they going to be allowed to speak?
Allowed to say?
Talk. Oh, talk.
Yes.
Well, you know, because they were told they had to wear their, they could only talk when they had their masks on, so I just wanted to ask that question. They're going to be allowed to talk?
Yes.
Excellent. That's all I had. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Roscoe?
My own? Okay, now I'm on. Thank you, Superintendent Belizzi, for this report that you put together for us. I just have a concern, really hoping that you can address it, about the potential to ping-pong back and forth between taking the masks off and putting them on, especially with the K-2 students. It can, I think, be really confusing. So is there, I guess I'm just looking for some reassurance that it's going to be something really significant that would cause the need to put every, you know, to take that choice away and put masks back on?
It's hard to absolutely predict. I think when I look at our cases and I look at how many per school, because we have that broken down, and it's on our dashboard as well, it would definitely have to be something that's very glaring. And again, it wouldn't be just, just me saying yes this week, no the following week, because we did talk about that even on the calls and as superintendents when we get together just to kind of discuss things, because it is concerning, on and off, it is a lot for everyone, but it is something. So I think it would have to be something that's really significant, and I think because we will be continuing to notify families, you're going, as a parent, you're going to be aware of that, as a staff member, as all of us, because you are going to get those notifications daily, so you will start to see that increase. But I do think it's going to have to be something that is fairly significant and an opportunity for us as well to review what strategies, mitigation strategies are we doing in the classroom. Do we have to tighten some of those back up prior to then it just going straight to masks? You know, so I think for us, there's a lot of things we can look at in conjunction to that piece. The mask is just one layer, I feel like, as long as we maintain a lot of the other mitigation strategies, my hope is that doesn't happen.
Absolutely, and I don't expect you to have a crystal ball, but I just know that was certainly a concern, so I just wanted to vocalize it. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Mr. Ross?
Yes, if we have people go out and quarantine, are we going to have teachers available to teach them remotely? In other words, let's say a class, somebody has COVID, and we quarantine, let's say, eight people in that class, are they going to be able to learn remotely?
So they will be on isolation because they are testing positive for it. So what will happen is they will be checking in on either the Seesaw website for their assignments or through Google Classroom. At the elementary level, we do have those remote learning teachers, which will still be available to hold office hours and to check in. And the same thing with our students that are in grades 6 through 12, they can still contact their classroom teachers, ask questions, get clarification, so they still will be accessing the assignments and things that are required for them. And then the hope is when they come back, that those support teachers that we have in place can bring them up to speed along with the classroom teacher for anything that they may have missed or still confused on.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Doring?
Just a follow-up on what Ms. Roscoe had asked about. If you were to see that COVID numbers were to start rising, you had mentioned that there are some other mitigation strategies. Do you have anything specific in mind as to what else you would do first prior to bringing masks back?
Yes, so some of the guidance that they had given us in things that we can take a look at would be, you know, limiting the mixing of classes or grades or the way we set things up. So way back in the beginning, when the pandemic started, we had talked about, you know, that we had co-horted kids, and we went back and reviewed the things we did. So I think a lot of it would be having conversations, what's happening in that building or buildings depending, and then finding if there are ways we can kind of keep them together and limit the mixing of the different grade levels, reviewing some of those things that we may need to do. You know, we are, and I don't know if I mentioned it early, but we still have a lot of the home test kits, so we're going to continuously be sending those home as well. We are getting another pickup of those next week, so we have another large shipment coming in from the state of all of our home test kits. So those will be things we're going to continue regardless, so I do feel like we'll be aware when it does happen, if it happens. I don't want it to happen, but if it ever had to.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else from the board? No. Okay. So for public comment, I have a statement that I will read. The Board welcomes public comment as it represents an opportunity for members of the public to express their views to the Board on matters within the Board's authority. We ask all speakers maintain appropriate standards of decorum. No boisterous or inappropriate conduct is permitted. We expect comments to be respectful and civil in tone, and we do not permit name-calling, raised voices, or vulgarity. All comments must be directed to the Board and not any individual Board member or individual member of administration. Although the Board values and appreciates the input of the public, the Board and administration will not be responding to questions or engaging with dialogue during the public comment period. Instead, the Board and administration will determine whether, when, and how to address questions that arise during the public comment period, and whether to address the issues on the agenda or a future meeting. So having said that, the crowd is not very loud, or very large, I hope you're not very loud, but you're not very large. I do have a timer. I will let it go for three minutes. It's not a hard stop, but please be respectful of others who do want to speak, and I will just share with you and remind you, this topic can be emotional. I just want you to, we will not stop you from saying whatever you want to say, that's your right, but just remember that this will be out on YouTube. It will be something that your families, your children will be able to see. So with that, if anybody would like to make a comment, please come up to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Kristy Collins. My address is 20 Los Brook Lane in Wallingford, and I have three children in the district. There's something that I put together, but I also wanted to make a couple of comments on a little bit of something that I read in here about the at-home tests, where now the poison control is saying that at the tips of the test, so the extraction vial in many of the kits include a chemical that acts as a preservative agent that could be harmful if ingested. So I don't really believe that we should be testing our kids constantly. And then also, the CDC says waiting longer between Pfizer and Moderna doses may reduce rare myocarditis risk for younger men. So having three boys, I'm really hoping that there's no plan on forcing a vaccine upon our children, since it is our freedom as parents to choose that. Sorry, I'm just really annoyed. We're anticipating that the mask mandates are going to be lifted. Any Board of Ed districts that refuse or delay lifting the mask mandates will be considered as pushing against the Great Reset. We all know that the mask threat is far from being over. We shall now and again turn our attention, if not now, but to the CRT, CPT, CST, and the ever-continuing and the vile AFT overreach that's rampant in our schools, and I have proof of this, so it's definitely happening. It is wrong to teach our children that skin color matters and that the guilt being pushed, it is wrong to make children take political sides instead of simply discussing the issues of history. It is wrong to push sexual identity to four-year-olds. My sons are not being taught to be guilty about their skin color, sex, or political beliefs. This is all an agenda to divide our children, and it's wrong. You know it's wrong. We all do, yet the schools are allowing it. But we, as the parents, will not. We are also aware that relaxing the mask mandates is setting the stage for forced quote-unquote vaccinations of our children. Our children have the freedom of choice, therefore, our fight is far from over against all of you and all of this. The parents and children of Wallingford ask that you help, and you do nothing but moan and lie. We all know the playbook, which is all about power positions, pensions, and perks. Our children aren't even a priority on this list, and you've already proven this. The AFT, the BOEs deserve absolutely no praise whatsoever for lifting these mask mandates, especially since I have a stepson who lives in South Carolina, and they haven't had a mask mandate in, I don't even know how long, or in Florida, where my mother is. So remember the agenda, the CDC, the AFT, the government, all of it and all of you. Remember, you drew first blood here, and this is what's happening now, the tyranny that reeks in the room and in our schools. That's right, our schools where our children attend, not your schools, our schools. So I'm not understanding why it matters how many children are vaccinated. It doesn't matter, and it shouldn't matter, because there's plenty of kids out there that aren't even getting it that aren't vaccinated. So I'm hoping that you guys are taking all of this into consideration and that hopefully some of you care enough about our some of you care enough about our kids and not just about the agendas.
Anybody else for public comment?
Hello.
Hello, thank you, just your name and address for the record.
Anthony Lapia, and at 3 Templeton Road.
Thank you.
Thank you for providing a place to sit, I think that's a nice thing. So one of the things I want to start with is that I think in any dialogue, it is always helpful to, instead of doing this, do this. And I come to you with palms up, and the reason I do that is because, as a parent, I have felt frustrated and I have felt helpless over the last two years. I'm sure many of you have as well. Don't think for a moment that I don't appreciate your work, don't think that I don't appreciate or respect the things that you do and the service that you provide. We're proud members of a school district, and we're proud members of a school family. And that family, especially with Christine Sagnella, has been one that we really appreciate and that we feel deeply a part of, or we did. Over the course of the last couple of years, I think that we have gotten so deeply immersed in being aware as to whether our children's masks are up, and we've stopped looking for the good stuff, we've stopped looking for the important things, we've looked to see if they sniffle, we listen to see if they cough, we want to know if they are infectious, we want to know if they should sanitize, we want to teach them that the air that they breathe is a problem, and that's wrong. But what we're not keeping our eyes on is that underneath those masks, they're not smiling, and they're not connecting, and they are isolated, and they are alone, and they don't understand the world the way that you do, or that I do. I'm a 44-year-old man, I understand that sometimes things won't go our way, and that sometimes things won't always be safe, but our kids don't understand that. And what they've been told is that the air is bad to breathe, and that they can't talk to their friends, and that they shouldn't commingle classrooms, and that they should play sports with a mask on, and that doing the right thing means suppressing their face and their smile, and it's wrong. We're so concerned with the symptoms of COVID, but we aren't looking for the symptoms of depression, isolation, sadness, disconnection, and those things, my friends, are very dangerous. And you will graduate to new classes, and you will have the opportunity to see successes far beyond this, but our kids, mine, of which there are seven in your schools, I'm responsible for them from hereforth, and I deal with the collateral damage that's being done right now. And while you look for sniffles and coughs, I'm looking for signs of anxiety, depression, isolation, and sadness, because my kids, seven of them, are far more likely to die by the hands of suicide than they are by COVID, because there are 73.1 million children between the ages of zero and 18 in this country, and 970 of them have died from COVID. I'll let you do the math, it is .0013%. The likelihood that they will suffer from the anxiety, the depression, the sadness, the isolation is 25X. If you're not interested in that, I don't know what to tell you. But when will we decide to move on and focus on the fact that being well goes far beyond having COVID? Being well goes far beyond having COVID. It means being connected to your community, it means being friends with the people around you and being able to reach out and not elbow bump them, but hug them, touch them, know that you have a friend who has your back, but you can't even speak to them because your mask is up. We've turned our teachers who are dedicated, I know they are, because we used to be a part of the partnership, we were in our schools all the time, my wife Caitlin and I were the classroom parents every year, and we went to classroom reading, we did the classroom parties, we did that because we were your partner. We're not your partner anymore, you dictated to us, you didn't ask us, you made a decision, and those are our kids, and that is our school and our community. And by the way, I don't blame you, I don't even have any real hard feelings, because the decisions that you've made are hard ones, and what you face is unprecedented. In 44 years of life, for the first 42 of them, when you had a flu, you stayed home until you felt better, then you went back to school. Now, it's a 10-day process to wonder what the hell will come next. This is insane, people, but know that we've put you in a position of power because we trust you to make great decisions for people that we love. Don't take that lightly, and listen to us when we tell you that this is ridiculous. It's time to move on. You may have masked our children, but you never silenced us, and if you mask them again, we won't be silenced then either. And it means more than taking masks off. Let us back into the school, let us come and see our kids where they learn, let us engage with the community that we've built, that we're a big part of, because we're your partner. And moving forward from today, we could either be your partner or we could be adversaries, and I know what I'd prefer. I'd love to be your partner, let's do what's right for our kids.
My name is Eliana Peroli, and I live in 56 Osage Drive.
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. I just want to say, I've heard people in my school say that they like keeping masks on, masks on, some people don't, and I think we should all see smiles again, and if our mask is below our nose, we shouldn't be yelled at. And I go to Moran, and we get lunch detention if we have our mask under our nose, and we get yelled at by our teachers, and we can't have our masks down if we're sitting at the lunch table, we can only have it down if we're eating, and I think it's just really sad, and I think kids should be able to do whatever they, like, not whatever they want, but to have freedom and to smile again, because right now, I know that we're not really smiling, we're either like squinting our eyes and people think that we're smiling, they can't really see our face anymore. I've heard people say that they're used to masks, and it's pretty sad to hear them say that, because they say, "I want to keep my mask on because I have acne" or anything like that, if we had a choice, take it off, and I think it's pretty sad, and I think we should all take our masks off and all that, and with sports too. And that's it.
I just want to thank you on behalf of the board for coming. It's not easy to come and talk to all of us, and you were very eloquent with what you had to say, and you truly spoke from the heart, so thank you very much. I am up here. I know.
My name is Joanna Perez, 56 Osage Drive, and as, again, thank you for having us here, I know that this is probably quite difficult scenario, being that we're going into our...
Can you pull the microphone closer?
Third year now. I just want to cite everything I'm looking at here. I think there's only about three of you that actually have CDC-approved masks on. The rest don't work, and I think we all know that, and whatever we're making our children wear are cited to not really be effective in regards to stopping the spread of this virus. So that's one thing I wanted to point out. For those of you who aren't wearing masks, thank you, because it makes you look a little bit more human, and I think that's what we're missing today. The other thing I wanted to say, give me a second, because I'm actually really like upset and emotional about this. I want to see the numbers of the school-acquired viruses, the positive tests. I want to see the numbers and the data of the kids that are spreading it in the classrooms, teachers that are spreading it to kids, because I really don't think that's being collected. So if you could show that to us as parents, I would really appreciate that, because I think that's the data that we're not paying attention to, okay? We're just looking at statewide data, we're looking at it from a bigger perspective, we really, if we want to be effective in this not masking on, masking off, going back and forth, as Ms. Roscoe said, we have to really see how many people are actually acquiring it from the classroom and spreading it within the classroom, because that's how we can greatly affect this and keep it contained in the future. I don't know if any of you have ever researched or done scientific data or collected data, is anyone? Yes? No? Maybe so? Okay. I had to do a dissertation for my degree, and I had to collect a lot of data, and it takes more work than just looking at greater, bigger populations, or being so confined to just a very small population, which is what's happening right now with masking and vaccinations. We're not really looking at the true data from a long-term perspective. So to echo what a great friend of mine said, we really need to keep what's great, what's in the children's best interest from a long-term perspective and look at longevity here, not just what's happening day in and day out. The last thing I want is to look back on this point in history and see that I didn't do something or didn't work in my children's best interest, because I really, truly believe that this is something we're going to have a really difficult time recovering from, and our children are the ones that are carrying the burden for us. Our children were never designed to take responsibility for our health, that's your responsibility and my own. My medical decisions are for me, and my children are not here to keep me healthy and to keep me safe, that's my role for them. So for teachers that are receiving vaccinations, that should be efficacy enough, and we should not be moving forward, as the woman, first woman that spoke said, in supporting mandatory vaccinations for children, and I hope you really, really hear us when we say this, because I could tell you if, I know there aren't that many people in here, but I could tell you if that starts moving down the line, and if we start doing this back-and-forth political garbage, we're definitely going to have a lot more people in here. So respectfully, please listen to what we're saying, and I thank you for your time.
Hi, I'm Bree Cash. So I just had two things to really say. So the next time I think that we think about putting the masks, oh, 2:20 with house staff, sorry. The next time that we think about putting the masks on the kids, I think it's important to look at the data during masking and how many kids actually had COVID while masking in our schools, because if we look back to when we had the outbreak, the numbers were through the roof and everybody was masking, so I think that we should look at using a different strategy instead of masking. I also think it's important not to look at the COVID vaccination rates and how many people are vaccinated, or how many children are vaccinated within our school system, because just like with the flu, it does, the COVID vaccine doesn't cover every strand, which we also found with Omicron, so I think it's important to look at that and try to not push those, especially when our, on our kids. You know, my daughter is eight, and I even heard, you know, she came home and said stuff about how the teachers were talking about the vaccines and how the, how they should get vaccinated. My son, who is five, also said the same thing, and I just don't feel that vaccines should be pushed on my kids in the public school system. It's our job as parents to talk to our kids about that, not teachers or school staff. I don't know exactly who it was, but it was definitely said, because we don't talk about that in our house. I also feel that it is not a children's job to protect the adults, so again, when looking at the masks, I think that we're going to have more issues if, when we take these masks off, and then try and put them back on in the future. And that's really all, thank you.
Any further comments from the public? Seeing none, any comments, additional discussion from the Board of Ed or from Superintendent Bellisi? Mrs. Costelli.
I just want to make a general comment to the parents that have been, to many of our meetings. I want to thank you for your civility, you've been passionate, and you are your adversaries for your children, I get that, and I appreciate that you have been very kind to the board. There have been a few, and maybe we're a little over the edge, but most of the emails and certainly the comments, especially tonight, were very civil, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no more discussion on this topic, our agenda item is, I will entertain a motion to approve the revisions to the Wallingford Public Schools reopening plan, the Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Services Plan 2021-2022.
Shall I move?
Second.
That is Mr. Ross and Mr. Vado, discussion on that. The only thing that I will say is that this is on the agenda as an approval, because it is consistent with what we did in August. Superintendent Bellisi and previous to you, Dr. Menzo, brought this in front of the board, so it was very transparent and everybody knew what was happening. Technically, this does not have to be filed with the state, so it does not, it will go out on our website, it will be there for everybody to see, but there's no deadline to this, or there's no official action with the state that needs to happen. Mrs. Lavelle, would you mind doing a roll call for this?
Sure, of course.
Thank you. Mrs. Costelli?
Yes.
Mr. Dory?
Yes.
Mrs. Passeretti?
Yes.
Mrs. Raccio?
Yes.
Mrs. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
And Mr. Vado?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Thank you very much. Our next item is discussion on, we have a policy and a regulation on the use of face coverings in school, and the agenda item is discussion for suspending those. So I'll let you, Superintendent Bellisi, walk us through these two. I understand suspension because, oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Latour, sorry, sorry, sorry.
That's okay.
Policy, I do understand that there, we have the federal mandate on transportation, and some of that is interwoven here, so it's not as easy as just saying, throw it out, so help us understand where we're going.
Okay, so I am going to recommend, there is board policy in existence under the Board Governance section, it's BFA, which allows the Board of Education with a two-thirds vote to suspend any policy or regulation with purpose for a limited time, and I'm going to recommend this evening that you suspend both the use of face coverings in school policy as well as the corresponding regulation. And I would say that I would request that suspension through June 30th, which is the time allotted through the legislature for any decisions to be made in the case of a localized outbreak. So at that point, I would then recommend that the Board will sunset this policy and the regulation. The federal mandate in terms of mask-wearing on school transportation is a federal order, so the policy being suspended does not cause any complications to that, it is a requirement as it would be if you were taking Metro North into New York City or taking a flight, you're obligated to do it whether you have board policy and board regulation or not. So this evening, I am asking, obviously, because it would be close to impossible to extract out pieces, thank you, of this policy and regulation, so my request would be to suspend through June 30th, and at that time, at our June Board meeting, we will sunset the policy.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions?
Okay, no questions.
And then, of course, you know, at the March 18th time that the federal mandate goes through, at that point in time, I think it would be wise to mention at an operations meeting or at an instructional committee meeting, you know, when we're live-streaming our meetings so the public knows, Mrs. Bellisi will certainly communicate that as well, whatever decisions are made at that level at that time, okay?
If there are no discussion, no board members that have discussion on this, I will open it up to the public. Is there any members of the public that would like to speak upon the suspension of the face If you would like to make a public comment, you can come up, but to be honest, nobody's going to be able to hear you if you speak from your seat. So if you'd like to come up, please do.
I love a good microphone. So, question was, where's the documentation that indicates it's a federal mandate on buses? We haven't seen it, and in other states, specifically down south, they are not wearing masks on buses, and those are in our country. So where's the documentation? Where can it be found?
So I will work with Superintendent Bellisi, and we will get the CDC link in. It was actually provided on, I believe, Tuesday's Department of Public Health call, so we will get that into the parent communication this week, so that you can see what all of the districts in the state are dealing with.
Yeah, federal, state is...
Correct. All of us in the state are dealing with the federal guidance.
Okay. Follow-up question, and then I'll scoot out of here. With regards to parents in the schools, with the lifting of mask mandates, at what point will we make that known? Because our principals are expressing that they do not have the freedom to make that choice, and it's inconsistent with what we're hearing from other towns where those principals are making that choice to open up schools. At what point will we be allowed back in schools to partake in some of the activities with our kids? Thank you.
Any other comments?
I just have one thing, well, two things. Okay, the first thing is that it would be nice to actually have activities in our schools again, when my daughter was in kindergarten, you know, they had chorus and everything, and we got to go to those spring concerts and everything. So I know that my daughter, she was in kindergarten at the time, now in third grade, would really love to have that back. And the other thing is, is that I did send an email thanking you guys, but I just wanted to say also, thank you for doing what's best for our kids. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Cash? Anybody else? Okay. I will bring the, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Superintendent Bellisi? I just do want to comment on one thing. The building administrators will be communicating out after this evening, so either at the end of this week or start of next week, in terms of welcoming parents back and what that's going to look like. We did have some discussions today in regards to that when we met with all the administrators, so that will be forthcoming, okay? All of this will be shared with the families tomorrow, from me, the plan, and the update of all of that information, and then there'll be more coming from the buildings as well. You're welcome.
At this point, I will entertain a motion to approve the suspension of Policy C-19 and Regulation C-19A, the use of face coverings in schools for Wallingford Public Schools through June 30th of 2022. So moved. I think Mrs. Regan and Mrs. Costelli got that.
Second.
And when you're ready, Mrs. Lavelle, if you can do a roll call on that one?
Yes. Mrs. Costelli?
Yes.
Mr. Dory?
Yes.
Mrs. Passeretti?
Yes.
Mrs. Regan?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mr. Vado?
Yes.
And Mrs. Raciolo?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes.
Thank you very much. And again, I want to thank everyone who came out tonight. We have tried our best to respond to all of the emails, all of the questions. Nobody has a crystal ball. We certainly hope that this is a huge step in the right direction, and this momentum keeps going, but we really do appreciate all of your input and all of your comments and suggestions. So, thank you all, and this meeting is adjourned.